Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. Thank you. Now we will enter into the part of the meeting which calls for public comment. Is anyone here prepared? Yes, sir. Would you like to identify yourself?
Yes.
And you may stand or wherever you're comfortable.
Hello, my name is Brian Brettz. I'm a lifelong resident of Mount Gretna area. And I'm here representing the Friends of Governor Dick. And I'm here to give a response to the Park Board's rebuttal of our Friends Group presentation of problems at Park. I'd like to begin by thanking you for taking the time to listen and consider these important issues impacting the life of our community. I appreciate that there are many other important and pressing matters that you need to address. And that ideally these issues wouldn't rise to the level of necessitating your involvement, but be resolved by the Parks Board. Because of a long history of dismissive and disrespectful treatment at the hands of that board, we come to you, our county commissioners and the trustees of the park. It was suggested by the Parks Board that if you were to grow weary of all this public attention and involvement, that you could wash your hands of the whole thing, resign from the position of trustee and turn the fate of the park over to the courts to decide. I trust that you all believe our beloved Clarence Shock Memorial Park at Governor Dick is of too great a value as an asset to the people of Lebanon County to ever consider letting it go, and that you will not be baited by such a proposition. I don't believe it now, and I didn't believe it two years ago, when the same line was used to dissuade me from getting involved in the affairs of the park. I was told that if I were to make a stir, I would frustrate you and that you would turn the park over to the courts and the courts would give it to the game commission, and we both know it's not what Clarence wanted. I'm choosing to not be intimidated, and I'm taking my cue from the Luke 18 parable of the persistent woman seeking justice. We will continue to work for the needed reforms of the stewardship and leadership of Governor Dick Park. So I apologize if our civic engagement throws tedious. But don't expect us to go away. So where are we now? Our Friends Group has made a brief presentation outlining problems we see with the management of the park. And the Parks Board has given a lengthy rebuttal to that presentation that did very little to refute the original points we had made. In this moment, I'm not going to list out every point that the Parks Board failed to address in their two-hour rebuttal to our presentation, nor am I going to get into refuting each statement they made that I believe is incorrect. Dr. Becker's presentation on the Parks Forest Stewardship focused largely on the problems facing the forest that need to be addressed. And we are in agreement with that assessment of those problems and the need for corrective action to ensure the future health of this forest. Where we disagree, however, is on the results of the Forest Stewardship Plan. Their plan has always looked good in print or presentation, but we contend that its consequences have been a disaster detrimental to the health of the forest and not to its benefit. We have shown you pictures of the sprawling invasive plants replacing our native forest, and they have shown you pictures of a young oak tree and white pines that have successfully grown in the timber harvest areas. We're not asking you to make a decision based on the "we said, they said" of these presentations. Our request is that a third party review the Forest Stewardship Plan and its actual consequences, and it be conducted by an entity or organization that specializes in forest stewardship. And importantly, has no stake in the financial proceeds from timber harvests carried out on our plans. The Park Board contends that reviews conducted by the DCNR and USDA are sufficient in this regard, but we contend that merely meeting the standards of successful commercial forestry is not enough. It is our understanding that, given the language of Clarence Shock's D establishing the park, that the Board's forestry agenda needed and was granted court approval on the grounds that it was justified for the health of the forest. And the health of the forest must be the criteria by which the Forest Stewardship Plan is judged. At the August 16th meeting, it indicated that you would be open to discussing commissioning a review of the Parks Forest Stewardship Plan. I urge you not to wait to have that conversation. With the beginning of the federal fiscal year in October, the Park Board expects USDA approval and grant funding for the next forest management activities. The first step of which would be the mowing down of the majority of young trees across forty acres by means of tree shears mounted on a piece of heavy machinery. Oaks, beech, birch, hickory, cherry, and the rest will be felled to allow more light to hit the forest floor to encourage the growth of a new crop of tree seedlings. In our April presentation, we showed you a picture of a young oak laying over a young beech tree. They, and thousands like them, were the forest actively regenerating itself, growing tall to fill openings made in the canopy by the death of mature trees. Removing the next generation of trees is antithetical to the purpose of regenerating our native forest. And a moratorium should be imposed on all such activities while a third-party review of their forest stewardship is carried out. Again, I appreciate that our coming to you with these issues is a breach of the chain of command that the Parks Board of Directors ideally would handle this, but they have been unresponsive to the general public for far too long, and the community deserves a chance to be involved and to have a voice. I will end my comments by repeating our requests. Please commission an independent review of the Forest Stewardship Plan and its results. Please make reforms to the Parks Board of Directors that it might better represent park users and the community as a whole. Please allow us to schedule another workshop meeting with you featuring Dr. Joan Malut, founder of the Old Grove Forest Network. It's a, she's a national figure, and she can speak to these issues from a position of academic authority. And finally, I'll end with this question. Would the commissioners be opposed to discussing placing a moratorium on forestry activities in the park while these issues are resolved?
I'm not in a position to answer right now, but I'm glad to, you know, think it over and that's where I am right now. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
I am. I just, Ryan, I know you're passionate. I also know that the Forest Stewardship Plan is due to be redone in two years. They stated that at the last meeting. And the other thing is that I did get some thought to your request for the review. And I think someone reviewing it and, you know, helping to craft our next plan would be appropriate. I don't know who's going to pay for it if we do everything twice in two years. But there's a gentleman named Sandy who's in charge of Penn State Forestry. And I don't think we have to go out of Pennsylvania. I don't know where this other person is from. But I think that someone like that, Del Boy can, you know, do some initial things, but the Sandy that's in charge of Penn State, I think, would be someone who we could engage because we have a good working relationship with Penn State. But I'm looking at all kinds of things, you know, and I'm listening. But I want to assure you also that I would never vote to get rid of Governor Dick. That is not on my agenda. So I was shocked that you would think I would even do that.
No, no, it was suggested by a board member at their presentation as he presented it that if you're tired of the public showing up every time there's a problem, that you could just
If you're right, it's a constitutional right for, you know, public comment.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't, I would not think that any of you would ever do such a thing.
Well, thank you.
To speak on the point, though, of waiting two years to address the stewardship plan, this next set of activities is included. So the forty acres that is at stake would not wait for the next stewardship plan. This is impending on us, and the timeline is short to make decisions.
To be thinking back on, as just yesterday, we had workshop session and Penn State Extension Office was here with their entire staff and all their different activities. Jim sat right here, and I asked him, he has some expertise in forestry, so does Del Boy, and I got his card after his hospice. I intended to actually follow up and inquire about what services they might provide for just his purpose, just to be able to listen to their plan and give their opinion.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Where that goes.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, you're not recognized yet. I'm trying to conclude this one, and then I will introduce you.
Sure, sure.
Just protocol. Thank you.
That does end Brian.
Okay, now, I was trying to have some order, that's all.
No, I'm sorry about that.
Go ahead, please identify yourself.
Susan Wheeler. I just wanted to say that I've done a lot of research, and I have found Selma Rocco in the state. And she's an ecologist. She does restoration plans, and actually she knows Governor Dick. She's rock climbing there. So we have contacted her, and we're not going to do anything. We would definitely put her credentials and everything before you. But we have to go through a preliminary process to see if she would be interested, see if she's allowed to do it. Since we're not the landowners, that's a big setback for us. She would have to be approved, and it would be done in conjunction with Dr. Beck. We would like him to be informed and to be involved if he so chooses. So, sorry for interrupting.
No, I just wanted to finish with Ryan. My response to your comment would be, I think it would be more appropriate for those things to go to the board and maybe copy us if that would be a way. I think, I don't want to get that we're going to be the direct connection on everything, Governor Dick. I mean, that's not what the process is or the the structure is. So I'm just, that's what I'm asking, or suggesting that that would be a better way for us to see it go, or for me to see it go. I'm sorry. Susan Reeves.
I just wanted to say, and I'm going to take a stroll down memory lane in history. It's not been good for us to deal with the board.
We hear that.
I know, I know. It's just, we have, we're given three minutes, and we have done a whole lot of plans before, and it's gone nowhere. In fact, they totally disappeared. So that's why we're using you. I guess this is a starting point, and then we fully intend on talking to them. But we've got a lot of people to get on board with this whole process. So we don't intend on excluding them, but we have to cover all our bases to get it done.
Mr. Sherman.
Yeah, my chairman.
From which municipality?
Mount Gretna. I'm vice chair of the Mount Gretna Water and Sewer Authority. Have an extensive background in environmental protection. I worked thirty-three years for DDP. Been a resident of Mount Gretna for twenty-five years or so. Grew up in Lebanon. Tended London Valley College and Bachelor's of Science in Biology. And went to the University of Tennessee and have a Master's Science degree in ecology. Did a forest study for a tract of land that was purchased for the state by the Nature Conservants. So I have a pretty good background in forest ecology. Two topics for your consideration. One of them I mentioned when I was here last, and one of which is very good news for you folks. And that is, I think I talked about carbon credits, and that you can enroll forest lands in a program that you can derive income from by working with the entity. There's a lot of different entities that you can do this, but the one that I talked to you about was something called Core Carbon, C-O-R-E, and I have I have articles. Yes, I have. It was published in the Wall Street Journal about core carbon and how it's available for southern timberland owners. It's coming to the Northeast. It's not here yet. What they do is they depend on remote sensing data to give estimates of tree species and biomass. And then they will tell you on your tract of land how many carbon credits you have, and you can sell them. Most recent update that I have, well, it's actually in this article, three point nine million acres have been enrolled in this program in the southeast. They've enrolled sixty projects, and they've produced ninety-eight million offsets. And right now, the value of an offset is anywhere from eighteen to thirty dollars. It fluctuates up and down. So that's a great opportunity somewhere down the road when the program, the data becomes available for our area, that you could reduce timber harvesting in portions of your property and enrolled in a carbon program. And it's a great story because of the benefits, the financial return that you can get from. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and this is with my water authority experience. I was asked by Mount Gretna Heights to come and talk to you. Their water supply is in close proximity to the harvest area. They recently worked with Pennsylvania Rural Water Association. They provide technical support and training to water supply systems and their representatives. The Heights has serious concerns about the use of one particular herbicide that you folks use called Aus, I'm sorry, Aus XP. About using that especially in the vicinity of their water supply well. They discussed this compound with a forester, who would be another possibility for you guys to talk to, to get a different view of the forest management plan. He expressed concern for the use of Aus XP herbicide in certain site conditions, which you have at Governor Dick, one of which is to do timber harvesting on slopes. It doesn't bind well with soils and can move down slope during rain events. So you should consider a setback area up slope of that water supply well. He strongly recommended to
Is it a fifty foot, or what is the perimeter?
A hundred, I think there's a hundred-foot setback. But in talking to Mike, he said even three hundred to four hundred feet would be better and more
Well, more riparian buffer is better too, but if you have some, it's something.
Well, that's right. That's right.
But a hundred foot is the requirement.
Yeah, with the slope there that's above the well, the potential for that herbicide to move down down gradient, I think is pretty significant. So one request, would you consider establishing a buffer up slope of any water supply wells in the area? And I think it's the Heights water supply. I don't know if there's any individual water wells along the street that borders the proposed timber harvest area. And then the other thing I would ask on behalf of the Heights is would you consider working with them to take a water sample for lab analysis for the presence of herbicides and determine background water quality? I think it's to your benefit to do that, to have that data, but it would also be to the benefit of the Heights as well. I do have a copy in the material safety data sheet for this compound, this Aus XP, that probably is worth a look at, but this forester that I mentioned, and I've worked closely with him on some projects at my previous place of employment, said it's a good, it's a good compound to use, but only in flat areas. Any questions, Ryan?
A setback seems like a reasonable request that we can look into.
Well, I'm not personally, I'm going to be passing this on to the board for their consideration. That's the proper process.
Sure. Well, I'll be glad. I mean, if they have questions or anything, I'll be glad to discuss and provide any information I have.
And I will ask that they respond to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I was just going to ask if that's been presented to the board.
No. I just developed this in the last day or two.
All right, well, thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our workshop of the sixteenth and the public meeting of the seventeenth of September. We moved in second that we approved the minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Are there none in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. This is new.
We had received September the fourth and fifth of eight hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. That brings us to a total cash of four million, four hundred thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Our expenditures were two million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents. The tax claim is ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars, leaving us at about two million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report subject to audit.
We moved in second that we approved the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions or comments? Are there none in favor? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
I do have a resolution here. I need to change some signers on the park and the account.
Sorry, I couldn't understand the
Park in what?
Park and Recreation.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. So I just need to have that approved. We had to change some of the people I had left. And put the ones on.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved this resolution. New signers? Any questions? Are there none in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
I'll need some signatures.
Morning. Introduce yourself, and you may proceed.
Charles Navy, Director of Community Resources. Under resignations and terminations, David Thomas II, caseworker one, children and youth resignation effective September first. Stephanie again, full-time M A T P Officer, Community Action Partnerships resignation effective for last working day, August sixteenth. Eden Riddle, Judicial Secretary and Reports resignation effective September fifteenth. Nicole Eisenhardt, First Assistant District Attorney in the District Attorney's Office resignation effective October sixth. Michelle Hall, Office Support Two in Domestic Relations termination effective August thirtieth. Dante Giffith, Operations Specialist in Information Technology Services resignation effective June twenty-eighth, last working day. Bradley Eisenhower, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail resignation effective August twenty-first, last working day. Time Bozeman, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail resignation effective August eighteenth, last working day. Tyra Reel, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail resignation effective September fourth. Erin Hustlander, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail removal effective August twenty-eighth. Dylan Bolt, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail removal effective August twenty-eighth. Sarah Zinski, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail resignation effective September first. Mason Lurch, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail resignation effective September second. Brian Wenzel, Casual Part-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail removal effective the last working day of April twenty-second. Catalina Hoyos, DJ Office Support One slash Interpreter at M D J Figueroa's Office resignation effective August eighteenth. Holly Adams, M H Caseworker Two at M H I D E I resignation effective September eighth. Janice Robles, General C slash Interpreter in the Foundationary's Office resignation effective September first. Doris Penn's, Casual Call LPN at the Renova Center resignation effective the last working day of July twentieth. Stephen Morris, Regular Part-Time Office Support One and voter registration resignation effective September first.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations. I do have a question. It seems like Nicole Eisenhower has been with us a long time, but there's no date of when we hired her. So I'd just like to give her a shout out. She has served us quite well. And I want to thank her, wish her all the best in her future endeavors.
It's removed in second that we approved the transactions as presented. Any comments or questions? Are there none in favor? The motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, Todd Gladwell from the jail, a three-week away effective August twenty-second.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved that leave. Any questions? Are there none in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to changes of status, transfer, and promotions, I have a motion to approve Chief Public Defender Megan Tidwell's request to have the ability to reclassify the Assistant Public Defender One positions to Assistant Public Defender Two positions for candidates that meet the required qualifications. There is no change in the total Assistant Public Defender complement. This will simply provide the ability to assign the Public Defender One or Two classification to these positions effective immediately September seventh.
I'll make a motion to approve Chief Public Defender Megan Tidwell's request.
Okay, we moved in second that we approved that request. Any questions? Are there none in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Douglas Stumpf, Change of Status from Part-Time Senior Center Manager One at Area Agency on Aging to Substitute Senior Center Manager. No change in his rate effective October second. Jennifer Eisenhower, Promotion from Fiscal Assistant at Area Agency on Aging to Fiscal Officer Two at Area Agency on Aging at the rate of one thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents by weekly effective September eighteenth. Kathy Smith, Transfer from Admin Assistant One in Domestic Relations to Fiscal Assistant at Area Agency on Aging at the rate of one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents by weekly effective September eighteenth. Hallie Weaver, Promotion from Caseworker One in Children and Youth to Caseworker Two in Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents by weekly effective September seventeenth. Angel Medina, Change of Status from Assistant Enforcement Officer slash Interpreter in Domestic Relations to Assistant Enforcement Officer, No Interpreter, at the rate of one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-one cents by weekly effective September fifteenth. Lucia Miranda, Change of Status from Office Support Two in Domestic Relations to Office Support Two slash Interpreter in Domestic Relations at the rate of one thousand eighty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents by weekly plus fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents by weekly interpreter pay effective September eighteen.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved those transactions. Any questions? Are there none in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, Building Security would like to rehire Anita Scott as a casual part-time security officer at the rate of twelve dollars and fifty-five cents per hour effective September twenty-fifth. Children and Youth Services would like to hire Jamie Hampton as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixteen cents by weekly effective September eleven. Children and Youth would like to hire Jeremy O'Malley as a caseworker one at the rate of one thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixteen cents by weekly effective September eighteen. Park of Courts would like to hire David Julio as a part-time court clerk at the rate of twelve dollars and ninety-six cents per hour effective September eleventh. Renova Center would like to rehire Lisa Frey as a casual call LPN at the rate of thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents per hour effective August twenty-eighth. Recorder of Deeds would like to hire Mark Bowen as a Office Support One at the rate of nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents by weekly effective August, I'm sorry, September eighteenth. Sheriff's Office would like to rehire Brett Ozowski as a full-time deputy sheriff at the rate of one thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and three cents by weekly effective September eleventh. And voter registration would like to hire Michelle Julio as a Office Support One at the rate of nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents by weekly effective September eleven.
Make a motion to approve those other transactions as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Are there none in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
If there are no questions regarding the tract transaction presented, previously read as U B plus following Daniel Linares Perador, Longevity Payment Assistant District Attorney in the District Attorney's Office, this is a one-time payment of two thousand dollars effective September twenty-third. And Shannon Pascal, Southern New Free Assistant Public Defender Two to the rate of three thousand, four dollars and fifty-two cents by weekly effective September third.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved those salary board transactions. Any questions? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved. And thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
Sir, Audrey Fortin, Director of Lebanon County Probation Services. And I am here to present two different things to you this morning. The first is the Supervision Fund Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. As you know, uh, individuals on adult supervision are assessed a monthly supervision fee while they're on supervision with the department. Act thirty-five requires us to send half of that money collected to the state on monthly basis. And then the state turns around and sends it back to us at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the last Supervision Fund Agreement that we had expired in twenty twenty-two, so I provided you with a copy of an updated Supervision Fund Agreement that is for the month, for May first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Um, I am respectfully asking that you consider signing all of the uh, signature pages that are required to get this, um, reimbursement initiative. Uh, all of the signature pages have been provided to your staff in the office.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved this Supervision Fund Agreement. Any questions? Anything else, Audrey? On favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Thank you. Uh, the second item is the Juvenile Grant Aid Program Application and Agreement for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, I've provided you all with copies and the copies include a breakdown of our proposed budget for the fiscal year and how we, um, intend to spend the money. Uh, the amount that will be received this year is the same as in previous years, and that is one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, we can use up to ten percent of that for operational costs. Uh, this year, uh, the breakdown comes to about eight point three percent toward operational costs. And the remaining balance will be utilized for personnel expenses. Um, at the end of the fiscal period, if we've not spent all of the operational monies, designated monies, we can ask that the state permit us to reassign those to personnel costs. This is what we've done for the past few years. I'm asking you for your consideration, um, and approval for the proposed budget for the juvenile grant name.
I make a motion to approve Audrey's request for juvenile grant aid to recoup one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars.
It's removed in second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, John.
Morning. Introduce yourselves and then whoever's going to tee it up and proceed as you will.
Uh, John Shaw, Criminal Justice Advisory Board Planner, Office of Probation Services.
You know, let's warn that Lebanon County Correctional.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Warren Litz and I are here this morning to request your authorization to prepare and submit a grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for funding that would enhance the correctional facility's ability to detect and mitigate COVID- nineteen among inmates, staff, and visitors. Uh, the commission is making funding available for confinement and detention facilities in counties across the Commonwealth uh, for that particular purpose. So in response to that funding announcement a few weeks ago, we are preparing an application, uh, a grant budget and the required narratives and, uh, you have before you an advanced draft of that budget. I say an advanced draft. It's a work in progress. It's not a final product. Uh, as a matter of fact, since I dropped the packets off, the budget has increased. We were able to get a price quote to upgrade some, uh, video conferences equipment. So the budget now stands at thirty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars. And that was just something that I currently did yesterday afternoon. But we'll continue to update the budget and narratives between now and September nineteenth, which is the grant submission deadline. So we're really here to, uh, request your authorization to, uh, you know, finish the application and, uh, submit a complete application by the nineteenth.
authorized motion to approve, uh, the, uh, attendance of that, that process to, to apply for a grant.
Second emotion, and thank you for pursuing that funding so we can, uh, have those resources available. It's important.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, second, uh, to approve this application process. And Jamie has a comment.
Just a question. Do you have enough of the required C job? Uh, endorsement? Do you have a sufficient number of support?
No, not yet.
I guess you have till the nineteenth.
Yes, we do. It does. This is actually a C job coordinated grant. It was where I came into, uh, to this and the approval of the C job members and a letter of support for the C job officers, which we'll get. Uh, because the C job isn't slated to meet formally until October ninth, uh, the commission is allowing us to get approval through emails, but as long as we can document that discussion, which we will then attach to the grant application along with the letter of support. But, uh, not yet. I've had three members, so, but we'll get there, yeah.
Uh, nothing else other than, uh, a way to get to you with the greatest C job. Is that what I heard?
Correct. On this one, yes.
Okay, great. For just any bridge that we can. On favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
And Warren, thank you. Good morning, Daniel.
Good morning, Dan.
May introduce. Yes, sir. Yeah, introduce yourself and then proceed.
Good morning. My name is Dan Lyons. I'm with the Lebanon County Redevelopment Authority. We administer the county's community development program, including the first-time homebuyer program. Uh, the first-time homebuyer program helps, uh, low and moderate income persons achieve homeownership for the first time with a combination of down payment and closing cost assistance as well as, uh, housing rehab to bring the properties up to standard. Now, we've been operating the program for three decades with, uh, two primary funding sources, the county's local affordable housing trust fund and, uh, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, which is a competitive grant-based program that, uh, we apply for to the state periodically. Keep the program funded. Uh, and typically how it works is we receive a grant from the state and we use the local affordable housing trust fund as match for the grant. Now, usually a grant will last us three years, but we're back just a year later, uh, seeking to submit another grant application due to pro, you know, program demand. Uh, so, I would like permission to submit a home application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is the, the maximum request. And I would, uh, also like to request a one hundred thousand dollar match from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support that application.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for one hundred thousand dollars in the form of a match from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to apply for the grant from the state.
Second. Balance in one thirty-seven.
Uh, I think it's about eight hundred thousand dollars. I believe you're under, you're under the one million mark.
Yes.
Well, actually, it's, it's it's a question, but not on this. Somebody should go on this first thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Anything else on this particular motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Thank you. We have another question.
Yes, um, where do the apartments stand there in Clayona? Or has, has that been redid or?
The, uh, uh, at our office.
Yes.
The, the work is underway.
Oh.
Um, we have so, but if you give the, uh, total cost of those apartments, we have about a million dollars from the home program going toward that project. And that was a seven hundred thousand dollar grant and then three hundred thousand dollars of recycled money. Um, and then I believe that the rest of it is a combination of a loan from, from Bolton Bank and, uh, contribution from the Palmyra Interface Housing Council.
Okay, and that's because they're going in the basement there with, um, food bank.
That's part of it. Yes, yep.
When is it expected to be done?
I believe it's the end of February.
End of February?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that's a great update. Thank you.
Stop by anytime if you'd like to see. There's, there's lots of progress.
Okay.
Good, Daniel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Paul.
Good morning. Introduce yourself and, uh, once you came and then we may proceed.
Okay, good morning. I'm Holly Lake, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities, really intervention. I'm here this morning for several things. I'll begin with the Lebanon County Human Services Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This plan is Pennsylvania's way of obtaining data and reports for how we are spending the, the monies that are within the block grant. There are several county departments that are included in the block grant funding. So today I'm actually representing not only Lebanon County Mental Health and Intellectual Disability, but also the Drug and Alcohol Commission as well as Community Action Partnership. We have been in Black Grant County since twenty seventeen. The block grant brings us together to write the plan, but also allows for great collaboration regarding the funding in that, um, we're able to, uh, use them in a flexible way so that they can be redistributed from one department to another. So for instance, if someone is under budget, another department may be, uh, having a deficit, then we can kind of resituate those monies to cover the budget and the services and supports. During fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we received a total of four million, seven hundred forty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And that was split between those departments. Sixty-one percent went to mental health. Twenty-eight percent went to intellectual disabilities. Six percent went to drug and alcohol, and then five percent went to the Community Action Partnership. It is also important to note that the block grant funding is not all-inclusive of those departments' total budget or total funding for that department, but only a percentage of the overall funding for each department. You received a copy of the Human Services Plan, which is seventy-two pages in total. Today I am seeking your legal and formal signatures in order to submit the plan by the deadline that the state of Pennsylvania has set, uh, September twentieth.
Second.
It's removed in second and I ask that you convey our thanks to everyone that participated in this. I know it's a huge undertaking and, uh, a lot of coordination and in spite of all the other duties that you have to run your departments, uh, you know, it's, it's certainly, you know, a compliment to everyone that, that participated, so thank you.
And the question and answer is very educational.
I really appreciate the question and answer time as well. And those public hearings, I think it's really important to be able to answer the questions. Educate our community on how we spend those monies, but also get feedback and input from our community so that we know how better to utilize those funds moving forward.
Any other questions or comments? Not all in favor of the motion to approve the Human Services Plan, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Thank you. The second item is for contract amendments for M H I D E I for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three that end June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we do have twelve contracts in total, and those contract changes equal fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Those will be covered in our allocation for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, so we are not seeking any additional county tax dollars to cover those expenditures.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved the provider contract amendments for twenty-two, twenty-three. They're involved and regulations regarding the motion. There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
And then finally, for, uh, contract amendments for M H I D E I for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, there are three contract amendments totaling one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, again, those would be covered in our current allocation. We are not seeking any additional county tax dollars for these, uh, contract amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollar, twenty-three, twenty-four contract amendments.
Okay, it's removed in second. Any questions regarding the motion? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. That's like.
We were already planning on having a Hunger Action Month proclamation today, and, uh, it so happened that, uh, Brian inquired about it, so I said, it's tomorrow.
Now it's today.
So, uh, if you want to do introductions first.
Sure. Please introduce yourselves and then we can do it.
Good morning. I'm Allison Zimmerman. I'm here on behalf of the Carrying Cupboard in Palmyra. I'm our Operations Manager.
And Brian Smith with Lebanon County Christian Ministries.
Okay, welcome. And, uh, we have proclamation to be ready to read.
All right. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Lebanon County, where nine percent of residents experience food insecurity. Whereas Lebanon County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community, provide additional resources to those in need. And whereas Lebanon County is committed to working with Central Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, sorry, Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, uh, Lebanon County Christian Ministries and the Carrying Cupboard in educating people about the role and importance of food banks and food pantries in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the fight to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, childcare. And whereas food banks across the country will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, we, the Lebanon County Commissioners, do hereby recognize September twenty twenty-three as Hunger Action Month at Lebanon County, call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Motion.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approved this proclamation, uh, recognizing Hunger Action Month. Any, uh, questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved. Any additional commentary?
Uh, I would just say, um, you know, on behalf of such a bunch of, you know, central Pennsylvania, it's really a hard thing to say today. You know, they, unfortunately, with all their activities going on, they weren't able to make it, uh, but, you know, it's local organizations that are, um, on the street doing the work. We just, uh, thank you for recognizing this. It is an important number that nine percent seems to be creeping towards ten percent. Uh, that's fourteen thousand people here in our community that, um, need assistance. We live in Lebanon Valley, so our communities always step up and provide, and we're just honored that we can do that, um, with the Gracian Service. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Is Amy Hill still there?
At Central Pennsylvania. Uh, I do not know.
I just wondered.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, we thank you for your good work and, uh, you may, uh, see a picture. Oh, that, would you like a picture? I mean, favorite commissioners?
I would love to. Yeah, I can answer yesterday. Yeah. I said my daughter is going.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Okay, because she came here once before. Thanks for letting me there.
While we're waiting for Jamie to get back, I just want to thank Dawn for bringing that to our attention as far as the proclamation. And so we had it right on, right on time, so thank you. Right, we have our folks from voter registration and would you like to introduce yourselves and then go ahead with your presentation?
Sean Drescher, Director of Elections.
Amy Ross, Office for Two.
Whoever's going to present.
All right, so first I'd like to start with our Voter Hall of Fame inductees. Very excited to bring some in, it's been quite a few years since we've had any to to present to you. But I have here three certificates. I guess I'll read their names first before I pass them to you, so we have the Fiddlers, Margaret and.
They are here?
Yes.
And Robert. And they, along with Bonnie Cantor, have all been inducted into Pennsylvania Voter Hall of Fame. It's a rare honor, that means fifty years of uninterrupted voting. It's quite an accomplishment. So that requires a pretty deep dive into our archives, but we were very, very excited to be able to report that all three met all the criteria. So we have certificates here from the Governor and Al Schmidt as well.
Take a moment to present.
Yeah, yeah. I have a preference, who goes first, I guess the Fiddlers, we do it first.
So this is a great recognition for fifty years and as Sean mentioned.
Bonnie Cantor.
All right, Bonnie, thank you for being here, your patience at it early.
So we noted it did take some time to put that together, going through the archives and finding these records is very time intensive. So sometimes when we find a new voter, it can take quite a few months to get the supporting materials submitted to state as evidence and then have them sign off on it. If there is somebody who thinks that they have a relative or a friend who has voted fifty years uninterrupted, they can submit it to super voter at LebanonCountyPA.gov and we'll start investigating. But it is a slow process, so even once we get the name, it could take a while to bring you some more. Next, I'd like to review EIGP grant funds. Quickly, want to talk about last year, we got about less than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. It's a year-to-year renewing grant. We had agreed last year that we wouldn't be spending it on day-to-day minor expenses, but we're using it towards some capital investments for the office that were really needed and we did. It was a big, big help for our office, we use it to cover one hundred percent of our ballot cost for this last election. And with the new Act eighty-eight, we have to have a hundred percent ballot purchase, so that saved us a lot having that grant cover it. It also covered the run back machine that we're using, the processor mail and ballot envelopes that are coming back or packages. That grant is up for renewal right now. We're going to get a little bit more than last year, right about the same, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'd like to pose that we accept this grant, these grant funds, and then we can use them at our discretion moving forward for the budget year.
Okay, motion, motion approved.
Second.
It moved in second that we apply for these funds and accept them as presented, any questions? Not only, yes, Jim. Yeah, any idea what, at this point, like if you had a wish list or what they, I mean, when it comes to what you, if they're going to apply it towards?
You're reading ahead in the book, Jim. We'll, we'll get there.
Hit the pause button on that question. We'll be back to you. Yeah.
And typically those things will come through here.
If all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Now recess?
Yes, now I'd like to call the Board of Elections.
Okay, so we will go into recess of this public meeting and ask the Election Board to step forward and Mrs. Charles and. And Mr. Arnold. Attorney Arnold is chairman, I believe. Entertaining that business.
Looks like we're missing one.
Yeah, we're looking for.
Yeah.
Thank you, called over the Board of Election. Turn it over to Mr. Drescher.
Okay. All right, before us, we have the question of electronic poll books, e-poll books. We had our presentation about a month ago now, from the two vertical leaders in ESNS and No Ink. Both offer very similar products. Both offer very similar solutions front to back. One is an Apple-based system with the iPad, one is a Microsoft-based system with Surface Tablet. But other than that, they are very, very competitive, mirroring almost all the same features and benefits and even price. So before us today is the question of whether or not we would move forward with those. And if we move forward with those, would we move forward with that in a trial basis for the fall election? Or a full rollout or partial rollout, there's a few different ways to take this. I would propose that we do a form of a trial starting this fall and that's where I would start the conversation.
And is it correct that the trial would be at no cost to the county?
That's a very good point, the trial would be at no cost to the county. Both vendors have agreed to front all the equipment and training and service costs.
And we could either do a trial of one of the systems or a head-to-head trial where we compare. Right, run both of them and then have the opportunity to compare.
Yes. So I, I think the first question is, do we move forward at all? And do, if we have any questions regarding poll, the e-poll books, how they work, why we're doing them, now would be the time to discuss that.
So I think all of us, and I believe at least some members of the Board of Commissioners were present for the demonstration. So we kind of have an idea of how it works. And it's basically to take the place of the big books where you went in and signed your name, correct?
Correct. So right now we use, all have always used paper poll books, which is just a very large spiral bound notebook with everyone's name, address, birthday, and then people, voters, excuse me, sign in. The e-poll books are an electronic version of that, there's no additional information, it's the exact same file that we use for the paper poll books. The e-poll books, though, are password protected as opposed to paper poll books, which is open. Beyond that, the idea here is an obse deficiency advantage where e-poll books, we can, with a few clicks after the election is over, update our records. Right now with paper poll books, it's a very slow process, can take as long as a month to update our records. And it's a lot of people doing a lot of hand transactions over ninety one thousand registered voters. So this is going to cut down on human error and speed up our process on the backend dramatically. On Election Day, the other advantage is that where counties that have rolled out these e-poll books have seen lines drop substantially at the polling places on Election Day. That's something I want to see with my own eyes, but that has been consistent feedback we've gotten from all the other counties. And this is very important to me going into an election year where we are expecting a three hundred to three hundred and fifty percent increase in voter turnout over this last year.
And the e-poll books are also, correct me if I'm wrong, able to have more up-to-date information than, say, the paper books?
So the e-poll books have, we are not opting for an over-the-air system for security purposes. We're going to have strict everything, all done by me, all hardwired on an off-grid system. So.
Can I interrupt you for one second? So, but you're basically saying the information would be the same, so you're either going to print out a poll book.
Yes.
Or you're going to download it to the e-poll book.
Correct.
Is it faster to download to the e-poll book than it is to print a paper poll book?
No, they'll probably be about the same, probably the e-poll would be a bit faster, will probably be done about a day faster.
Okay, so you could wait a day longer to make sure that your information was more up-to-date to technically put the information into the e-poll book versus printing.
So something that's an interesting note about this, if you read about this in national news stories, the e-polls, they are being pretty universally rolled out. Is that in other states, they've authorized over-the-air updates where Pennsylvania has not. That's an entirely other con- different conversation and it doesn't affect us, but I don't want it to be confused with what we're doing. In over-the-air updates, what we can do is literally election morning, we could have the most up-to-date list in that poll.
Okay.
That is very compelling, but there's a.
But not possible for us here because of the current state of the law.
Right.
Okay. My final question, I think, is with the e-poll books, does it help a confused voter?
Yes.
That comes to the wrong location, maybe the wrong polling place or maybe the wrong county, more so than the paper.
Yeah, and I, this was not a planted question. But as a matter of fact, yes, it does, when you sign into an e-poll book, if you're in the wrong polling location, which happens quite a lot on Election Day with voters, right now, you just simply aren't in the book, the person goes to sign in, they're not there. Then what the polling place does is call into our office and we figure it out and then get that voter to the right person. It's a system that works, but it's not terribly efficient. And you might not have a call for twenty or thirty minutes and all of a sudden you have twenty calls and you only have three employees, so that makes it tough. E-poll books will have that information on them, when somebody goes to sign in, if they're in the wrong location, it'll instantly tell them you are in the wrong location. And it will direct them, it'll give them an address of where they need to go. If the capabilities in the e-poll books even give them directions to get there, though we're not accessing that in that way, we will be accessing in the future, will it has their their correct polling place and what the.
So it will not allow them to vote at the wrong location, but it will get them to hopefully the correct location.
Correct, and in a very much related follow-up question, that would be, how are the, how are the individual voter records flagged in the e-poll books? Right now on paper, there are small, there's literally a little flag drawn next to their name and then in a watermark is written in there and it is punched the poll worker. Hey, this, this person needs to show their ID, they're a brand voter, it's their first time. Or this voter needs to vote provisionally or something like that, there are, there are flags in the paper poll books. It's up to the poll worker to notice that flag and then to stop them from signing in and make sure they follow the instructions. The e-poll books will force the voter, if there's something on flag on their record, to not proceed without showing an ID or whatever else.
Okay.
The information contained in the e-poll books, is that all public record?
It's a hundred percent public record. There's no social security number, no driver's license number, no nothing like that.
Okay, so there's no confidential information that's contained in the e-poll books?
Something that also should be noted that if, from a security standpoint, if someone were to get my personal administrative password and would try to add a voter to the rolls, it would still be rejected by a system at the end of the day. If we wouldn't be creating new, any new voter records through the e-polls, there's no, it's a one-way system, there's no, there's no creating new routers. There, so we could go in and try to enter something in and then when it got back to us, it would not update the state database, it would stop right there. Then we would have a record, you know, so-and-so at this time of day in this location trying to create this record. We'd have some follow-up questions, but it wouldn't corrupt the system.
Do you have any other questions?
I do not.
You had a question, so it's on board.
Sure.
How many precincts have you, have you determined or are you recommending how many precincts this would be for a trial and how were they determined?
Okay, with, if we move forward with the trial, I would recommend that each, each vendor, either one vendor or both vendors each get ten percent precincts. We are looking at a, I, I pre-selected some precincts, just doing a quick scan using demographics and voter count and we tried to match up a good broad snapshot of the county where we're taking large precincts scattered evenly throughout the county and giving one to each vendor if that's the route you want to go. And it works out to be with two vendors, twenty percent of our voters.
Sean, would you also be printing out the books in this trial period?
Oh, that's a fantastic question, yes. Yes, I would be doing a full one hundred percent printing of the paper poll books and I want to back up everything. Everything we do has a backup to a backup to a backup and initially, in fact, for a while, I prefer to have a paper backup to everything. So we would still have those available, I mean.
So you would print it next year too?
That's what I would be more comfortable, I mean, that could be certainly up to the board. You could take that election by election to make that call at each election, but I would, right now, I see doubling it up, we have the grant funds that'll cover it. By accepting the EIGP grant, it's going to cover the printing of the poll books as well as potentially the purchase of poll books, electronic poll books. So I think for everyone's peace of mind for now, especially going into presidential next year, for everyone's peace of mind, let's not upset the apple cart, keep the paper ones, Sarah's back.
And is the trial only for this one election this year or will it go through next year?
The trial would be strictly for November seventh and then we would have to reevaluate how to move forward at that after that.
Sean, the biggest issue, it looks like with counties using e-poll books has been training with poll workers. Do you have any idea how you can impress them even with this trial?
Both vendors are enthusiastic to get in here to train the poll workers. When we're looking at other counties that have adopted both systems, it's been overwhelmingly positive feedback at the poll level, the poll workers, there's no, there doesn't seem to be any negative feedback based on age or background or everyone seems to be very comfortable using an iPad. And this, both systems do most of the work for the poll worker. So the poll worker has kind of less work to do by doing it, it's, it's a little bit of whiz-bang, snazzy, but they tend to like it. I'm, and having the election support from both vendors, I think it's going to be, I'm very comfortable. Uh, I'm, and having the election support from both vendors, I, I think it's gonna be, I'm very comfortable with it, quickly accepted. Uh, I know in trainings, we've talked about this for years. This goes back predates me in my tenure here, uh, and there's always a couple of people that raise concerns during trainings, but I've heard from every other county that's rolled these out. I heard the same thing, poll workers have their concerns, and then the second they get their hands on them.
So for the trial period, the vendors would be providing training for the poll workers?
Yes.
And should a decision be made to move forward with either vendor, they would also provide training at that point?
Yep, they do onsite in-person training. It's not even virtual, they'd be here in person.
And that's just part of the package?
Yeah, it's all rolled together. Vendors have a very strong interest in making sure things goes through the line.
Right.
Go ahead.
Do the e-poll books compare significantly?
They do not. The, the technology is out there, but we're, that is not a part of this package. It's gonna still be up to the, but what the poll book will do is when, uh, only visible, actually, that's a very good point to bring up. Uh, so right now in our paper poll books, the signature is there to the voter. They sign in, and then the poll worker looks at the signature and then matches it to the voter, we're supposed to. Uh, on the e-poll book, that signature isn't visible to the voter, while right now on paper it is. So I'm not saying there's ever been an issue with that, but theoretically, someone could come in, see the signature that's there, and try to copy the signature right off paper.
Upside down.
Uh, it is, it is upside down, but on the e-poll book, when it's facing the poll worker, they see the signature, and when they flip it to the voter, it disappears. So the only, only the poll worker sees the signature.
So when the voter signs then, and the poll book is flipped back to the poll worker, they can then see both signatures?
Yeah, they can do it side by side.
Okay.
But.
I actually have a few issues. One is having an appointed board, they can be sitting rather than appointed, than elected officially. I have a problem with that. Number two, whenever I sign any kind of a pin pad anywhere, my signature never looks like my signature. How are they ever gonna do any compares? I just, I don't get that. And another thing, has anyone checked into? I know someone that lives in another county, they didn't even get to vote last year because they were using the, the poll books. They had to get the poll books from the voting registration office because the sign-in booklet was not working. They waited outside for forty minutes, they had to go to work, they left. So until this is actually worked out, I just don't like this. I don't like this system. It's not gonna save any time if we're gonna still be printing out the booklets.
Well, I think that printing out the booklets addresses your final concern that you raised about having to go back to the election office and have them. They're already gonna be there. So if there is some kind of an issue with the e-poll books, it should have pulled up the process for someone to be able to vote. I think everybody wants.
Yeah.
People who are eligible to vote, to be able to vote.
Here's a cut down on the time, it's not to create anymore.
Any other questions?
I would make a motion that we move forward with a trial of e-poll books for the November election. It would be my opinion that we should have both vendors.
So motion is that a head-to-head trial be conducted for the fall election?
Correct.
And I second that motion.
Discussion? Questions, public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll, I'll inform them, and we can get that rolled out. Um, again, this is just for November. Make sure everything, we expect, uh, a turnout of thirty thousand registered voters or less across the county for November. We're expecting a turnout of close, getting close to ninety thousand next year. Uh, so, uh, this would just be for this one time, to see, make sure it lives up to what we've.
And to address the concern that was raised by the woman in the back. The actual decision as to move forward with regard to e-poll books will not be the decision of this board. It would be the decision of the elected board. So this is just merely for the trial.
Okay, then the next thing on the agenda is fairly routine. We have two, uh, polling place location moves. The first is twenty-six North. We're going to be, uh, just moving a few feet, literally, uh, right next door, it's just the door next door to the door. And we're gonna be going to three thirty, South Eighteenth Street, for the North Cornwall North Precinct. Uh, Suzanne's already been out to visit site. It's ADA compliant. It's very nice, so. Uh, we need to vote to move that, and maybe at the same time, on the same vote, uh, the Ebenezer Fire Company is no longer available for twenty-seven West is polling precincts. Uh, so we are gonna be using, uh, Ebenezer United Methodist Church at seventeen seventy-six Ebenezer Road. And they've also offered to, to take us in, and we've also checked that out, and it means all the compliance issues. I think, suppose we move both those to the new location.
We just took a motion that we accept those changes. And it's twenty-six North and twenty-one, that's correct?
Twenty-six North, twenty-seven West.
Oh, twenty-seven West. Sorry. I would second that motion.
Questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Other than that, uh, the election is fifty-nine days away now, and, uh, everything is on schedule. Uh, nothing unusual to report. Everything's rolling along. We should have the ballot done by the end of next week. And, uh, be getting all the final proofs by the end of next week, and our LNA testing is scheduled for the last week of September. We'll have, I guess, us on site with us for that, we always do. And the day that LNA testing is done, we can start sending out mail-in ballots.
Great.
No, it's happening fast. Oh, yeah, just put, there's two moves, there's temporary, no, it'll be permanent.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Just like to thank the interim board for serving, uh, during, you know, this, uh, timeframe, it's a lot of work and a lot of time, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, seeing nothing else? I close the meeting.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene our, uh, regular meeting and, uh, continue with that and ask, uh, Controller, let me to the. I would rather, well, I'd rather you sit in front. Good morning, if you'd like to.
Morning, I'm at the county controller. Um, I'm here to, to request, uh, for your consideration and extension to the current contract to Maximus, who does our direct and indirect cost analysis. Um, as I detailed, the current contract allows for a two-year extension with instant amendment to the original contract we signed in twenty-twenty. And the advantage to that is there'll be no, it'll lock in the same cost for the next two years. They'll be doing twenty-two and twenty-three. Uh, that sounds unusual, but they work two years in arrears to do it, so. Just asking for your consideration to, well, adopt that amendment and continue for the next two years, and Maximus does ninety-five percent of the calories.
Second.
It's, we moved in second that we approved this, uh, contract with Maximus. Any questions regarding the motion? Very none, no one favorites, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs.
Thank you very much. I have a paper for you to sign.
Okay.
Are you not going to do the payday?
What's that?
That's just a.
That's a person, it's a policy issue.
That's just what the employee is to circulate.
Comes from him.
Yeah.
Could certainly. Raise it or discuss it, but it's, it would just be a policy change in the handbook, and the controller is responsible for payroll, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Would you want it? Do you want to have it discussed?
Well, if we're gonna go on, yes.
No, no, we're not. What we're doing, it's an internal thing with the controller, it's, uh, changing a policy in regard to, uh, processing its office.
Pay, payday is moving a day later this year, that's just, I guess, everyone's consumption in the room.
Yes, um, that needs to be approved.
So that there's more time in that, in the week to process it, because we brought it to a number of occasions where. Right, Thursday was too compressed from a Monday holiday and and for other reasons, so Thursday to Friday, correct? Yeah, okay. Uh, I have a number of things here for your consideration. First, these two are identical contracts, however, for different departments. Uh, we've discussed this in, uh, in the past, the department heads, we've had a number of emails uh, about it, and these are contracts with Service Access and Management Incorporated, who would be providing, uh, interim fiscal services for children and youth and for the area agency on aging. Uh, those would be from now until February twenty-ninth. By the way, I guess we have a leak day in, in twenty-twenty-four. Um, didn't realize that till I saw this contract. And they would be providing those services. We have, we are, we are down on staff, um, in both agencies. Uh, we have lots of new staff. Uh, SAM's Incorporated, S A M Incorporated, does this uh, sort of consultative service in, uh, a number of other counties. Some counties, they even do the entire thing, rather, rather than just consulting it and assisting. Um, but we have a number of, particularly children, you, the reimbursement has to be submitted to the state um, and budget preparation that need to be done, and in aging, again, uh, they're, they're short on staff in the fiscal department and need to keep operations going. So the proposal is for five thousand dollars per month per department until the end of February. Uh, they both have, uh, reimbursable funding sources to cover this, and because we're not covering the cost of the personnel in the vacancies, this would be a replacement, so, um. I would ask you to take, uh, two different motions, one for children and youth and one for aging, just in case that's needed to show that way in a minute. So, uh, first, I guess I'll propose the children and youth services agreement with SAM's Incorporated.
The total for both is thirty-two thousand? Or is that?
No, each.
I will make a motion to approve thirty-two thousand dollar SAM's fiscal management agreement for children and youth.
Sure. Okay, it's moved in second. Any questions regarding the motion? Very none, no one in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so.
Second.
We moved in second at the same price. Any, uh, questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Okay, next I have a, um, a license agreement renewal, uh, for permidium, which is a service that the sheriff's office is utilizing for online permits for, uh, concealed carry permitting. And, uh, this would be a, the period of August twenty-fifth of twenty-three through August twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-four. Approved.
Make a motion to renew the sheriff's permidium contract. Um, I think that is, just looking at my pen, looked at, and I can't find it, um, five dollars per user fee. And then, uh, they have a credit card charge that the user also picks up.
Yes, they do it online, yes. People can still come into the office, walk in and still, it's twenty-dollar flat, you think, okay, it's about seventy, thirty. Right now, for this thirty, I'm like, about seventy, it's still.
Okay, thank you.
Second. Okay, Don, are you, uh, comfortable with the wording so far? Anything else, Sheriff, that you have to add?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Okay, uh, next I have a lease agreement for a tower site for, uh, Department of Emergency Services. Bob Dowd was in several weeks ago and, and requesting a, uh, a sales agreement at that time for a different property. Uh, informed you that there are a number of different, uh, additional tower sites that are gonna be added over the next two years. And he's been, uh, negotiating some of those, and this one in particular is with North Londonary Township. Uh, it is on the, the north side of four twenty-two, near the North Londonary Township building, and it would exist along with other towers on the same site. So this isn't a, sorry, new tower farm, so to speak. It's a, it's a it's a, it's, there's existing structures there, and, um, and it serves the purpose as far as coverage that's needed. And there's no cost to make.
Somebody, we'll approve.
Second.
Okay, it's removed in second that we've been this, uh, lease agreement. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so.
Okay. Um, I have a, a document that would, would, um, give signatory authority to James Dunmoyer of the Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse for the purpose of contractual agreements, amendments, revisions, and other incidental documents related to contracts with providers. Um, that would be the delegated authority. However, the initial agreements, amendments, and such will be commit, approved by the commissioners, and if he is to sign any sort of provision, that will eventually be brought back. This is a, this is a practice we've been carrying on for years.
Make a motion to approve the request to assign James Dunmoyer some of the signatory authority as outlined in the contract.
Okay, it's removed in second that we present that, uh, authority to James Dunmoyer. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so.
Um, next I have a hotel tax grant fund application from Motorama Productions. You may recall this one, I think this is, uh, several years they've been conducting this event, the Drag Fest Indoor Drag Racing Car, Truck, and Bike Show at the London Valley Exposition Center. They've attached a, uh, a description, several pages of a description of their event, uh, how the funding is being proposed for use, so on. They have a total project cost of ninety thousand dollars for the event, and they're requesting six thousand dollars toward for their efforts, marketing campaign, et cetera.
I'll second the voting, motion, providing that six thousand dollars does not include the, the hotel fee because we're collecting that money to give them this money.
Okay, um, this is, you know, well documented as far as like the purpose of the hotel tax money, so. You know, this is always good when we get one that's so complete, it's, uh, you know, use of the money. Any, uh, other discussion?
I think specific to, to that specifically, the request is, they, they bring in certain.
Base car drivers.
Drivers and, and vehicles, um, celebrity vehicles, or however you wanna talk, you know, popular vehicles that are known in the, in the industry. And they are asking for a grant toward the, uh, travel and transport of the vehicles, which they estimated twelve thousand, so they're asking for six thousand toward that transport.
Nothing else? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so.
And lastly, I have four requests for exemption from real estate taxes for, uh, disabled, eligible disabled veterans. They are, uh, Jerome Rosenbaum of Smith Avenue eleven, and Thomas Core of Villa Lane eleven, and Jeremy Walters of North Mechanic Street Frederickburg, and Brian Mott with Fieldstone Drive, Tampa.
I make a motion to approve the four requests for real estate tax exemption for the one-hundred percent disabled veterans.
Alright, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding the motion? Very none, no one in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same signs, so. If it's our business, unless there's something in the floor. I have, it's our business, unless there's something in the floor. If not, motion to adjourn. Okay, stand adjourned, thank you all for your attendance and your input.